I don't think we should just jump at the first person. We should actually interview people, you know? Not people we meet at courses.
We have a short-
She has an expert here.
But she's an expert.
There's no question she's an expert.
There's plenty of experts out there. The fact is, can they do what we want, you know?
I believe she can.
Or do we need counsel at all?
So, my recommendation would be that we do hire a consultant, an attorney to serve as a counsel or a consultant, whatever term we want to use, to work with our town department heads to make sure that we're adequately representing the interests of the town in these proceedings. And Kathleen O'Donnell, you know, is someone, I met her through the Community Preservation Act campaign. I know that she serves on the board of the Community Preservation Alliance. She has experience on the developer side of 40B and on town council side of 40Bs. And timing is short here. We have less than a month before the next hearing on the pending 40B. We expect another 40B to be filed very imminently from what we've heard. So, we don't have a lot of resources. We don't yet have an assistant town planner. I think there's a need for us to have a consultant to help our department heads prepare comments, put them together in a written report, because written submissions are very important before the Board of Appeals. So, this really would be someone who would be assisting the town administrator, assisting department heads. And I would recommend that we would defer to the town administrator's judgment on this because she will be the one having most of the interaction with the outside consultant. Kathleen O'Donnell is a well-regarded attorney and an expert in 40B and affordable housing issues. I think she would serve the town well. I would be comfortable with the recommendation to appoint her.
But she also lives in town too and has a stake in the town.
As a resident of the town, yes. Yes. We have reached out to her for your affordable, you're our trustee on the Affordable Housing Trust.
Right.
Reached out to her for some advice on that. You have.
Yep.
And we may even want to consider appointing her-
Appointing her today.
-at a future date to the Affordable Housing Trust if she's willing to serve and if we need another member. We currently have five members, which is the minimum number that we can have. We are allowed to have three trustees.
Again, I'm going to hold off on my vote because, you know, this is taxpayer money we're spending. I'm not even sure if we need special counsel. And how much are we going to be spending? You know, that's the main thing.
It's not really special counsel. I know that's not on the agenda. It's really to hire a consultant who is an attorney, who has a legal background, who can bring the legal background to assembling-
Right.
...written submissions and coordinating the team effort with the department heads. Because, you know, department heads will need to address specific issues that are in our comment letters for at least, you know, we filed three comment letters. We believe the mail in Muse. One is inactive at this time.
I would ask that we hold off till the 21st so that I can do my own research. Because I can't vote on something that I don't know about.
It's just that we are scheduled to attend a Board of Appeals hearing on November 6th. So, that gives us, as Katie said earlier, a short window to get our department heads together with a consultant to put together our presentation. We need to have a strong presentation to put forward to the ZBA.
Would it make sense to try and just have a one, next week, a meeting just with that one item on the agenda? Bring Kathleen in and interview her? That'd be helpful?
It might. I know the department heads were planning to meet, not all of the department heads, but certain of the department heads are planning to meet tomorrow to begin going through the -- we have a lot of materials, peer-reviewed materials that need to be reviewed, responses to peer-reviewed materials that need to be reviewed.
Right.
It is a huge amount of paper.
It's a huge amount of paper that this person-
There's always the option to hire one individual for one project and another individual for another project. I think it would make sense to hire Kathleen for 40B projects in general, but we could certainly do that.
I would really like, in the future, if these were put on the agenda, you know, weeks and weeks in advance, so that, you know, I feel like this is being rammed down my throat right now. I don't know this person.
Well, I did-
You know, it's last minute, and that's not the way I operate in my personal business. And I'm certainly not going to represent the town of Milton in that fashion either.
We did have a conversation last week. I think I had a conversation with each one of the board members about hiring a consultant to help us with 40B projects.
If you didn't, you didn't have it with me.
Oh, I had it with all three of you. I did have a conversation. I didn't name Kathleen O'Donnell specifically, but I asked you what your thoughts were on having special, a consultant, hiring a consultant to help us with the 40B projects in light of the fact that we are just starting down this road of 40B projects. Like I said, we have the Hendrys right now. We have the Randolph Ave any week now. We have other potential 40B projects out there. No, I didn't mention Kathleen O'Donnell because from last week to this week, I was doing research on Kathleen O'Donnell. But as your town administrator, I'm trying to put a recommendation forward that, to you, the board, that names Kathleen O'Donnell as the consultant I feel the board should hire to help us put these presentations together on 40B projects.
I agree with you, Dennis. The more notice, the better, and, you know, whether it's MPeg or whether it's just the earlier we get these things. Unfortunately, town government sometimes has a tendency to move slowly, but sometimes things move quickly. And sometimes good ideas come up that, you know, require not as much notice as we'd like. We do always have an agenda item for future agenda items, and we, to the extent that we can improve on information, and it's not the first time that, you know, something has come onto an agenda a few days before a meeting, because just sometimes that's just the way things go, that, you know, that-
Yeah, but this is not the way to conduct town business, you know? Just bringing it to the board and expect it to be voted on that night without us even meeting this woman. I deal with lawyers all the time in real estate, and most of them screw up my deals. I just want to make sure that this person isn't going to screw up, you know? That we're going to be hiring this person, we're going to be probably spending $500 or $600 an hour or even more on her.
No, no. Her municipal rate, I believe, is $150 an hour. We've been told that, so.
$150 an hour?
Yes. It's a much lower amount than that.
I don't know. Seems like... Go ahead and vote it.
Would it, Dennis talk with her tomorrow?
Sure.
Set up phone to you.
Do you want to schedule a meeting for later this week? Well, today's Tuesday. We can't do it for Thursday. Or we could schedule one for next week. I thought someone was out of town next week, and that's why we couldn't-
I'm around.
-have a meeting next week.
I mean, I'm not even sure if we absolutely, I mean, I think Dennis wants to be convinced. I don't think, I know Kathleen O'Donnell. I don't really have to be convinced.
No, I don't either. I know her as well.
Well, I would, if that's the case, I would suggest you guys take the vote. I mean, I'm okay with that.
All right. Tom, would you like to make a motion to retain a consultant of the town for purposes of 40B projects and to hire Kathleen O'Donnell as our consultant/counsel?
Yes. The only thing is, I would like to have some upset price on it and, you know, I mean, work with her to get what is a reasonable upset price from both the town's perspective and from her perspective in terms of, I mean, she doesn't have a crystal ball, obviously. She can't anticipate. But from, based upon her experience and to try and get some happy, because we obviously don't, even with a reserve fund, we don't have an unlimited budget.
No, but, you know, these projects, well, we don't have an unlimited budget, but, you know, these are important projects to the town.
Yeah.
They're important to-
Clearly.
-a lot of residents, especially the ones who live in the immediate vicinity. So, you know, we often hire counsel for different things, such as Peter Epstein for the RCN and the Congress negotiations.
Now, my understanding also is when a 40B is, comes into the town, there is some money available for consultants? Is that the selection or the ZBA?
That's the zoning Board of Appeals.
That's it?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
I don't think we should overstate this. All we're really looking to do here is provide some additional assistance to the town at a consultant capacity-
Right.
-because we have limited resources, because we have a couple of projects that we think will be going probably at the same time, and-
So, I'll move that we authorize the town administrator to reach out to Kathleen O'Donnell to enter into a contractor engagement letter to represent the town on this particular 40B matter or 40B matters in general?
40B projects would be my suggestion in general.
40B projects in general.
Because people have two.
And that working with Kathleen O'Donnell, have a maximum amount on that, not to exceed amount.
I'm happy to second it if you would prefer.
No, I'll second it, you know, with a little discussion that in future, I'd like to know well in advance that we're going to be hiring some lawyer to represent the town on these projects. How much it's going to cost? Is there going to be a cap on the amount we're going to be paying? And give us a resume, you know? You met her at some function, you know, and here we are hiring her to represent the town. I don't think that's good enough to be quite true.
I don't think that's, I agree with you that we want as much notice as possible, and we should certainly get her biography to you. I know Kathleen. Tom knows Kathleen. Anne-Marie has met Kathleen. She's a resident of the town. She's a town meeting member. She is an expert in this area. I don't agree that we haven't looked adequately into the background. Maybe it should have been communicated a little bit earlier to the board, and it probably would have if, you know, under other circumstances. But as you said yourself earlier, Dennis, we have a lot of things going on. There's a lot of projects. We have short-term deadlines imposed by other boards, and we need to sometimes, not always, but on a rare occasion, make a decision probably in a shorter timeframe or quicker timeframe than we would like. But I hear what you're saying, that more notice is better. I agree on everything. But I don't agree that we're hiring her without adequate due diligence.
I haven't done any due diligence on her.
The town administrator has. And it's the town administrator's recommendation.
Where the ones who are voting.
Yes. But the town administrator is the day-to-day manager of the town, and she's bringing the recommendation to the board. It would have been helpful if we had circulated Kathleen's resume beforehand. So, that, you know, that we should do. But I think we're really voting on the recommendation of the town administrator here.
I don't know. Okay.
So, you seconded it for discussion. Is there any other discussion on the motion? And if not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Thank you. Okay. We have covered eight, nine, 10. We're on to number 11 on the agenda, which is the Information Technology Study RFP. And I'll ask the town administrator to give us a brief update on this.
Yes, Madam Chair. This is as a result of the Town Government Study Committee, and one of their recommendations that the town seek an RFT for an IT strategic study, a town-wide study of the IT needs, including software and programming in the town of Milton. So, I sent you all this draft RFP about a month ago. So, nothing has changed from the draft that you saw a month ago, other than I forwarded it to Murphy, Hestromi, and Lahane just to have the legalese added to it. That is required with all RFPs. This has also been circulated to the chair of the school committee as well, Leroy Walker. This was one, his suggestion when he was on the Town Government Study Committee.
Any comments on the RFP?
The only, and I don't think it's a huge comment, but because in the description of the work, part of it talks about the hardware and software, and then when it gets deeper into the proposal, you know, the successful proposal shall present technology strategic plan, which will include, which will not be limited to, comprehensive inventory assessment of existing technology infrastructure and related structure of town departments. It really doesn't, in that section, section above, it kind of says what you said in terms of software, but then it drops down in software, and a lot of that other stuff just kind of drops out of it.
Let's go to the, where are you at, Tom? What page?
Section eight, description of work. So, if you read the second paragraph, it has all that stuff in it. And then when you start reading the third paragraph, it kind of drops it out. It talks about infrastructure, but infrastructure isn't software.
I know that those one, two, three, four points were drafted by the Town Government Study Committee. I don't think they've been changed, have they?
Right. No, they probably haven't.
They have not. No. It's exactly as written by the Town Government Study Committee.
I would just suggest that rather make change this than when we do interview people, we make it clear to them that we're looking for more than just a study of the infrastructure.
Is that adequate, or would that create an issue with the RFP?
Well, it mentions above-
Because it mentions it in the paragraph above, this just drills it down a little bit deeper.
IT consultant to perform a comprehensive analysis of, in organizational system of the town and school departments, technology infrastructure, staffing, hardware, and software inventory.
Inventory.
But then it kind of forgets about it as it goes through the rest of it.
Well, all right. It does say, which shall not be limited to the following.
To, right. Yeah. So, I don't think it's flawed, but it's not written very well, but.
All right. But at least the including but not limited to language happens there.
Right.
Is there any other comment or discussion?
Other than that, I have no comment on it.
I had no comments on it either. Dennis, any comments? No? Then do we, do we need a vote on this?
Just need to approve the RFP so I can issue it.
I'll move to approve the request for proposal for Information Technology Study.
Second?
Okay. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. On to number 13. This was scheduled to be a discussion of the five-year financial projection. We're deferring that until a future meeting. So, on to number 14 is the FY '16 budget discussion, Tom, that you referenced earlier in the evening. And we've put this on, I think we talked at one of our previous meetings about having a discussion of the budget sooner rather than later-
Right.
-in the year. Tom, you've been working with the town administrator and others on the financial forecast. Do you want to leave a discussion on this or at least get us started?
Yeah, I'll get it started. I mean, clearly, there's been two dichotomies going on. Number one is the town side, and by the town side, I mean for the most part, the cemetery, library, parks, and all the town departments have been submitting level-dollar budgets for probably the past five years.
Five years.
And everybody's stuck with that. The schools have been submitting level service budgets, you know, and then kind of backing back and saying what the impact would be if they didn't get a level service budget. So, it kind of puts us not on a level playing ground, you know? And, you know, we're trying to claw up for money, and they're already asking for it and saying what the bad impact of not getting it is. Plus the fact that I think we've been so many years at level dollar now that we've cut about as deeply as we can into the general expenses. You know, the, for the most part, the salaries have been getting funded, other than the departments absorbing their longevity and step increases, which has been really what's been eroding the general expense.
Past two years, the warrant committee has tried to put the steps in lanes-
Fund some of it, yes.
Put the steps in lanes back in, but you're correct. Longevity has been absorbed.
Yeah. So, for that reason, I think we should probably be this year, do what the schools are doing and ask our departments to submit a level service budget, and then be able to discuss the specific impacts of not having a level service. And by specific, the schools do it very articulately, and they can tell you exactly what it means. If you were to go to this level, to this level, we have to be prepared to do that.
But Tom, didn't we ask our departments to submit level dollar and level service for the last number of years?
It wasn't really, the budget itself was level dollar, and then it was kind of an afterthought. And it really was an afterthought, because after they go through the exercise of getting a level dollar budget, it's just kind of thrown in there at the end and-
If the letter would state that if additional revenues were found, what would you like to see added to your budget? So, it was, as Tom said, it was level dollar budget, but then there were items added in.
So, we're trying to claw our way up.
In the event, yeah. In the event.
So, all I'm saying is that, you know, I think if the schools are going to submit, and I know they are going to submit, level service, then we should all be on the same playing field, so.
The budget's under the Board of Selectment's jurisdiction?
Yes.
I think we should ask them to submit level dollar and level service, because, I mean, level dollar, yeah, even though people were really tight with their budgets for the last five years, it did teach everybody a lesson, how to budget properly.
Well, when you look at those budgets, though, it really wasn't. It was just, okay, you know, you look at some of them, and they didn't even make any sense. I don't know where they got the money, but the budgets themselves didn't make any sense. There were items that weren't even funded that you know they were going to spend money on. And how are you going to do that?
No department closed down, you know? And each department head, I believe, became much sharper with their pencil and was able to make it work. And that's not a bad exercise.
But would it be fair to say that each department, especially the small departments, that they, you know, if they had a salary increase in their budget, and they all do, that they had to absorb it by reducing expenses? So, you can only do that for so many years. I mean, we know this from the warrant-
Agreed.
Once you reach a certain point, you're below what you can really spend. You take, for example, the treasurer's department. If they have to keep cutting postage, then at some point, they're not going to get the tax bills out in the mail. So, you can do that to a certain point. You can eliminate some maybe photocopying of other expenses, you know, unless you're the Board of Appeals and you need, photocopying's a big part of your budget. But there are ways that you can reduce expenses to offset salary steps and lanes. But after a certain point, they're really-
It hits critical mass, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. And after five years, it's, I think, starting to get there.
But what if they submit their level service budgets and we just can't afford it? And right now, it looks like we can't afford it.
Then you do the same thing that the school does. You indicate on each one of those budgets, if I'm to go down to level dollar, if you're going to fund me the same as last year, here's what I'm going to have to cut out of my budget.
Yeah. Well, levels dollar, I mean, the warrant committee can do that on their own, because that's just taking the spreadsheet and transferring the numbers from one column to another.
Right.
And then they can do that and send them back to the department and say, okay, we can't find you at level service. Here's level dollar. You come back and tell us-
What's the impact?
-how you apportion it and what's your impact.
Right.
So, the warrant committee could do that on their own, really. I guess the question, isn't there a revised format for the budget that the warrant committee would like?
We're working on a revised format for the budget, which has level dollar, level service, and then another column, which is a 3.25 percent cut.
Well, are you confident, Tom, that we can afford level service in '16?
No, we can't.
No.
I'll tell you right now, we can't.
So, why are you asking for it?
Because, well, two reasons. Number one is, we're only kidding ourselves. I mean, if, you know, let's get level service, which is, as a town, we want to be able to provide, right around the streets, and look at the condition of the roads. I mean, you know, look at the condition of anything in this town, and it's deteriorating. Why is it deteriorating? Because we don't have level service. We're not providing the same service. We're robbing Peter to pay Paul. And at some point in time, you've got to say, okay, here's what it will cost to do what we have to do. Now, if we don't have the money, we don't have the money. But let's know what it is first, and then work our way down from that. So, at least you know what you're giving up.
Tom, you might remember better than I do. When we were on the warrant committee a number of years ago, didn't budgets, didn't town departments submit level service?
Yes.
Maybe both, level service and level dollar, but at least level service.
Was level service, then we'd cut, and then they'd all come back in with impact.
Yes. Mm-hmm. You know, I think to make it consistent throughout town, I would agree with asking for level service budgets, knowing that, you know, that's probably going to become a big number. And obviously, the warrant committee's at the very beginning of their fiscal year, so they'll be looking at revenue numbers right as we go through the rest of the fall and right into the winter, and adjusting them right up through town meetings. So, the warrant committee has talked about an operating override. They were looking for an operating override last year, and, you know, there were some discussions with us, and we, at that time, didn't support one last year. We're at the start of the process. We have to see what revenue is starting to look like and what resources are available. But I would support level service budgets as a starting point, as what should be submitted to the warrant committee to start the process.
Right. And we know from the five-year, you know, projection, forecast we're working on, that , you know, level service, if the information we're getting is correct, and, you know, we're getting the information in, we're not necessarily doing as much due diligence as the warrant committee might do to try and drill it down. But yeah, there's a huge shortfall, you know? And it just grows. You know, you heard Joe Lynch today, and, you know, with more unfunded mandates coming down, that, you know, those are going to be funded somehow.
Well, that's why the pilot committee's work is important and other efforts that we can do to generate revenue.
Again, and I know you guys were on the warrant committee, but explain to me why we wouldn't ask for level service and for level dollar, so we could just compare the two at the beginning.
I think the budget format is going to have both.
Right. But I'm sure that, again, the schools will not do that. The schools will come in the same way they always do. It will first be level, well, level service plus, you know, advancement at one time, you know?
They had an advancement post last year.
So, it's a little more than level service, because it's doing some, you know, one-time But otherwise, basically, level service. And then rather than level dollar, it just, here's what the impact would be if you cut 10 percent, if you cut 20 percent. Here's, it's going to be 10 teachers, it's going to be, you know, three administrators, it's going to be, and they're very specific about what it's going to be. And that has much more of an impact on everybody listening than a wishy-washy, well, you know, here's my level service, and I'll just make level dollar work, and nobody's going to ask me any questions, and they'll see what it is, and nobody's really hearing an impact. You know, if you have to force a department head to say, okay, here's your level service. Now, we're going to cut it 10 percent. Tell me. Don't just put it on paper. Tell me what you're going to cut. I want to know specifically what you're going to cut.
Didn't the budget format, I could be misremembering this, didn't the budget format at one time have a back page that had-
Yes, it did.
If you had a 10 percent or 5 percent, whatever the number was, that cut?
That was put in at one point in time, yeah.
Well, where would you make the reductions?
Yes.
I don't know whether the template still has that or not.
No. What the template has is the level dollar budget, a level service budget, and a 3.25 percent cut.
Well, that's the new one you're talking about.
To level dollar, yes.
But the one that we've been working on, we've been working on prior to that, did it have a back page on?
No, that was-
It did last year.
No, that, I think, dropped off back in-
A number of years ago, maybe?
About five years ago, yeah. About five years ago.
But this new template is one that you and the warrant committee chairman are working on, is that right?
Yes. And the town accountant.
The accountant.
So, we've made some changes to the format, and we're working on it. I do have a department head meeting scheduled for Thursday morning to go over fiscal '16 budgets.
See, I'm not hugely in favor of just throwing the numbers down. I'm more in favor of having a, you know, if it has to be level dollar, just an explanation of what would be cut off of level service.
Service.
So, you're starting with level service as your starting point.
Well, that's what I was going to ask. So, you want level service and then have people cut back?
Right.
Versus come in with level dollar, and if we have extra money, adding into it.
Claw up, yeah.
That sounds reasonable to me. And the template is going to have both numbers anyway, so.
But if I'm hearing Tommy doesn't want me to have the primary's-
I'm not crazy, yeah, because the school committee's not going to do that.
But it sounds like the warrant committee chairman's asking for that, and that's obviously an independent committee, so.
Right.
That is what the warrant committee chair is asking for.
But the school committee will not do that. They will come in with the same, they've never used the budget template, ever.
No, I think in fairness, it doesn't-
It's a hard budget to make.
It is, but doesn't DPW also not-
DPW uses it, they use it, slightly different, but they, but they do use it.
They attach a lot of extra pages.
Pages.
At one time, they didn't use it, and that was, it was an effort to get DPW to move to it.
Right. Yeah, what they tend to do is they, they prepare three of them, which makes it difficult to look at. I've kind of, when I did it, I kind of consolidated them all and just kind of made it easier to compare the shit of last year.
So are you asking the town administrator to talk with the warrant committee chair about the level dollar column?
Yeah, to at least, let's consider, because, I mean, you know, that 3 percent is just arbitrary, number one. I mean, until you stop looking at things, you may be asking for 5 percent, you may be asking-
Oh, the third column?
Yeah.
I understand what you're saying there.
Yeah, I mean, well, why 3 percent?
But what about the two columns, the level dollar and the level service? To me, that-
I don't care, yeah, but-
Okay, that seems fine.
Yeah.
Level dollar and level service.
And then if, if it appears that you're going to be, well, then the narrative, we have to get our department heads, if, if we're going to submit level dollar and level service, you really can't tell what the impact per se is when you just look at the numbers. You've got to hear it.
Mm-hmm.
You know, the-
Presentation.
If it's going to mean a layoff, let me know it's going to mean a layoff. You know, if it's going to mean, you know, we're not going to be able to provide a certain service because I don't have the contractual money to do it, let me know that, you know.
PowerPoint presentations, I think we need to put together.
Sure, the big budgets, yeah.
Yes. Bring those in.
Yeah.
Because I think those have the impact. When people see it visually on a screen and they see the impact, I think it, it hits home.
The, the small budgets, it's virtually impossible to do level dollar. I mean, true level dollar, the, no increase at all. And we've never done that, because we've always funded salaries. But even though, generally, you look at some of those small budgets, and, you know, they, they might have had $400 for some administrative line item the year before, and it's gone. You know, and, and they showed that they expended it the year before. Well, if you expended it the year before, and now it's gone, well, where's that money coming from? And they have no good explanation. We'll find it someplace, is usually the explanation.
So it sounds like our consensus is we'll ask our department heads to submit level service budgets.
Yeah.
The form that the warrant committee chairman wants is going to have a level dollar column anyway.
Yeah.
And, you know, the 3.5 percent cut, I guess if the warrant committee really wants that, then, not all of the budgets, obviously, are under us, so there's independent boards that control some of the budgets. I would be inclined to defer to the warrant committee chairman. If he wants that column, then-
Yeah. I just think the 3.5 percent's arbitrary, and it doesn't seem to make a lot of sense, but, you know.
Maybe that's something the town administrator can discuss with the warrant committee chair.
Yep.
All right, anything else on the budget at this time?
No.
Okay. Then we're on to boards and committees. We have an appointment to the Historical Commission, number 15.
I'll make a motion to appoint, to approve the appointment of Edward Wendell, Jr., 187 Randolph Ave, to the Historical Commission to serve through September 2017.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. I served with Ted when he, when I was briefly on the Cunningham Foundation Board, and he's served on that for a number of years, and he's been very active in town in a lot of different activities, and I think he's a great resource to have on the Historical Commission. Has a lot of, a lot of his Milton historical knowledge, so thank you very much to Ted Wendell for being willing to serve on, on the Historical Commission. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Okay, number 16 is the Massport Authority Community Advisory Committee appointment. I'll go to the town administrator for that.
Okay, good. Ben?
Yes, Madam Chair. This is a new committee formulated under the legislature under the Acts of 2013, Chapter 46. It's a Massport Citizens Advisory Committee. It will eventually replace the current Citizens Advisory Committee. It's a 31-member committee. It is one representative from a number of city and towns, and it's, I think, six or eight representatives from around Boston, different districts in Boston. The representative on this committee should have expertise or disciplines in public health, labor relations, environmental, airport operations. And so my recommendation to this board is to appoint Carolyn Consella, your health agent, public health, health nurse, to this position. This 31-member committee will also have a $250,000 appropriation, and it will have a staff to, to research and make recommendations to the governor and the general court with respect to Massport matters. They will examine Massport reports and make recommendations on airplane-
Traffic.
Traffic and flows in and out of the airport.
I think it's a good, she has a good appointment here, Caroline.
Yeah. Okay, I'll make a motion to appoint Health Director Carolyn Consella to the Massachusetts Port Authority Community Advisory Committee. Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next item is a, a position of the Police Department, substitute traffic supervisor.
Motion to approve the recommendation of the police chief to appoint Tuanda Moore, 100 Blue Hill Ave, to the position of substitute traffic supervisor in the Police Department.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The November state election warrant is, needs to be approved and signed.
Move to approve and sign the 2014 November state election warrant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we've already covered the Community Innovation Challenge Grant, so we are on to the town administrator's report.
Yes, Madam Chair, I just want to update the board. As you know, maybe a month and a half ago, we, at Citizen Speak, we had a resident of the town talk to the board regarding ID badges for town employees, how he felt it was a public safety issue when town employees were going into residents' homes, that they did not have identification on them. I'm happy to report that the Managers Union and the Chapter 13 employees have begun getting their badges. We're working with the police station, who is issuing the badge, and hopefully, we'll have the other two unions in the not-too-distant future getting their badges as well. But the Managers Union incorporates the building department, which is your inspectors, your plumbing inspector, your wire inspector, your building commissioner, who go out to homes on a regular basis, and they do have their badges, and-
Which department is, you said there's only one department that doesn't wear badges?
No, the Managers-
Did you say that?
No, no, no. There's more than one department that doesn't wear badges.
I'm talking about departments that go into people's homes.
There's more, your, your DPW, your park, your cemetery, people, the inspectional services, your health.
Inspection services does not have badges?
They, they do have badges. They're in the Managers Union.
Yeah.
The Managers Union is the one group that has begun getting their badges.
Okay.
So your health, your health, your health, your, I'm sorry, your building department, they are now getting their badges.
Okay.
I don't believe all of them have them to date, but I think a number of them do. So by the end of this week, all of your employees in the Managers Union will have their badges.
Okay.
And then we will move on to the Clerical Union, and then the last union would be the EMEA Union to hopefully get a badge.
Yeah.
Okay, good news. An example of somebody coming into Citizen Speak and-
Yes.
Making a good recommendation, and a lot of follow-through by the town administrator on that. Is there anything else?
That's it.
Okay, under the chair's report, just very briefly, because we were not televised at our last meeting, which was with the Planning Board on the 29th of September, just for the public's benefit, because we had a number of discussions about the housing production plan at prior meetings. This board and the planning board approved the housing production plan that was prepared by Karen Sonnaborg, our outside consultant, and it was submitted with the Department of, DHCD, Department of Housing and Community Development, last week. So it's been filed, and just publicly, I want to thank our consultant, Karen Sonnaborg, for all of her time and effort on this.
Good for her.
Yeah, it was a good, a good plan, and a lot of work went into it. Also, Bill Clark, certainly Anne Marie Fagan, the planning board members. Emily Innes was the one who really got started focusing on identifying town-owned property. And then Alex Whiteside, the chair of the planning board, spent a lot of time finalizing the housing goals, and, and with input from this board, with input from former town administrator John Cronin, who cheerleading this for a very long time and pushing us, and members of the public, like former selectman Marion McEttrick, who submitted comments. So thank you to all of the people who played a role in getting the housing plan in. This was a big step forward, I think, for the town, and shows that even though it takes some time, we can, we can get some big things done, and this is a big thing, and this, hopefully we'll have, hopefully we'll, we'll be approved by the, by the state, and then we'll, will help us in our, our future planning efforts.
Don't they have a, a specific, limited amount of time they can review it?
Yes, they have 30 days to review and let us know whether it's complete. And just as a aside, the Conservation Commission was meeting tonight. They were going to be taking it up to vote on it as well. The regulations require a vote by the Conservation Commission, the DHCD guidelines do not, but in any event, we're going to go with the, with the regulations and have the Conservation Commission approve it. And then there's, after that 30-day period, there's an additional 60 days at which DHCD can approve it or reject it.
If they don't, it just automatically-
And if they don't approve it, it automatically becomes approved, deemed approved. So hopefully, we'll have some good news on that somewhat soon. Does anyone have anything to report?
No.
I just want to mention that I, I was in East Milton the other day, and I went in to see the, the old theater building.
Oh, yeah, it's being built out, yeah.
It's all demoed, and Jeannie Falcone took me in there for a look around, and it's going to be an amazing space. If you haven't been in there, you should take a, you should go in there for a-
I haven't been inside there in probably 40 years.
Right. And now they have scaffolding over the, the whole sidewalk in front of it, so they're just waiting for the building permit now, and hopefully, that'll be coming shortly, and we'll have a brand-new restaurant in town.
Nice.
Yeah, I'd like to go in and see it. I haven't had a chance to get over there yet.
They're there every day, and if you just walk in the front door, somebody is there, they'll show you around.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else, anyone? Then Citizen Speak response. We do not have a Citizen Speak tonight, but anything from a past Citizen Speak? Future agenda items?
No.
Then we can think of, if not, we can forward the request to the town administrator. Then, if there's nothing else, I will move that we enter executive session to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property.
Excuse me, are we going to go to trustees first?
Ah, yes, it's not on my paper agenda. It's, I should be looking at my computer. Yes, thank you, Mr. Hurley. All right, why don't we recess the regular meeting, and we will, and I will open meeting of the governor, the trustees of the Governor Stoughton Fund.